So how is everybody feeling after reading James two? You guys can feel free to unmute yourselves. And just let us know how you're feeling or type it in the chat. Anybody?
I enjoyed what reading James two in the sermon on the mountain, they were kind of interacting with each other, kind of similar to one another. So it was pretty scary though, because it's like, we really got to watch what we're doing.
Yeah, I feel like the introduction to just all of it. Definitely. I heard Tim Mackey say that it's a beautifully crafted punch in the gut. And I said, that's pretty good. Cause that's exactly how I feel.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm like, oh, boy, I got a lot to do.
Anybody else?
And if anybody is like unsure how to meet yourself or whatever, put it in the chat.
Well, as I was praying through the week, I felt like the Lord, yeah. Anybody have some insights?
I'm not really sure what you mean about insights.
Well, as you guys are thinking. Yeah, that's okay. So basically, I'm just wondering how you're feeling after reading it. And I know that the book of James can be, it's very short and powerful and it's full of instructions. So it can be intimidating. But it's not meant to be as, you know, Jesus died for us and has already forgiven us. So with that being said, I was praying this week and I felt like the Lord was just telling me that through the book of James and the book of Matthew that it's a lot, it's similar to being a parent. So if there's any parents on here, I'm sure you can relate, but like you want your, you want the best for your children. And so you have to give them instructions and guidelines and boundaries. And that's true freedom. But you know, gonna do that, then your, your children won't be just kind of all over the place then. And you, you give them those boundaries, then they're able to live a life fully as they were created. But if you're not a parent and you are younger and you're playing back this video or anything like that, I heard somebody say that the Bible is not meant to be a rulebook, but actually like a playbook. And I thought that that was super interesting, kind of from like an athleticism standpoint. And just really felt like I wanted to share that with you guys, because it's not meant to be like a scary book to read, but more of like, just simple instructions to guide us and lead us through life. So how is my insight on reading through chapter two?
That's good. I like it.
So let's see, I put some notes down. Oh yeah. So Will was talking about last time how he had acronym to follow when studying the Bible. And he also said, you know, if you have any of your own ways to study the Bible, just go ahead and add. And so I loved following his RCP. But I also have another one and I use this acronym called five Ps. So I wrote them down. And it's just to simplify things because as a mom, I'm really busy and have all kinds of things going on. And so luckily I was able to read through James. It's just about four pages long. And so then I went back and I was just picking things out and the five Ps helped me just to understand as I was reading and gain that insight. So first P is position yourself to hear from God. So position to find a quiet place and then just ask the Lord to be with you and guide you as you read his word. The second P is pore, P O R E. Pour over the passage and paraphrase major points. Don't scan, but meditate and ask yourself, what does this really mean? And so I'll read a couple of scriptures and then I'll just meditate on that. And as a mom, it doesn't really look like, you know, sitting by yourself with candles on and all the things. Sometimes you just have to do it wherever you are. And so whether that's locking yourself in your closet or your bathroom, just to be with God for a little while. Three is pull, pull out the spiritual principles. And so ask yourself questions like, what is God really saying to me in the scripture? What is he meaning by it? And just kind of sit on that for a little while. And then the fourth P is pose, ask your questions. Am I following and believing what this is actually saying? And the fifth P is plan, to plan obedience and pin down a date to follow through. So we have position, pour, pull, pose and plan. So that's how I kind of read through the scripture this last time. And I was able to really hear from the Lord that James is not meant to be an intimidating book of the Bible. It's just to gently nudge and guide us along that straight and narrow path. Anybody have questions on that?
That's good. I liked that. I haven't heard that one before.
Thanks. I just heard it on one of Priscilla Shire's things. I've known it for a while, but it was a great reminder just to try something new and get out of my habit so I can gain some new insights.
Nice. That's awesome.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any other ways that they like to read their Bibles? I mean, whatever works, you know, Will said, you read the Bible, it's a win win. But sometimes it is hard to understand. So it's nice to be able to pick things out and just really ask the Lord, what is he saying in those scriptures? I just thought I would share that.
Sometimes I like to do Bible mapping. So taking different versions of, of the Bible and finding comment, like Pastor Will said, finding common words in there and then trying to reflect on that, what, what's God trying to tell me with those particular ones that stick out? Yeah, it was like with this one with James, what really stuck out with me is sometimes we get so busy in our day and we complain. And we start judging other people like our coworkers. We don't know what they're doing, but then we just automatically assume that what they are doing is unimportant. So it kind of made me kind of reflect back. Do I do that? So today at work, I was very mindful to, am I saying that, am I, am I lifting someone up or am I tearing them down? So that's what I got out of it.
So good.
Our tongues are powerful. It may be the smallest muscle, but it's the strongest muscle.
Thank you for sharing that. That's really good.
And I totally agree with you. And I, after reading this too, I went to work and did the same thing. I was like, am I doing everything I'm supposed to be doing? Like Jesus wants us to do. And I'm like, no, I haven't always, you know? And then also with JL's teaching that cheated on Sunday, this all kind of relates to that too. And I'm like, wow, you know, I have done that too, where I was the mama bear, you know, and tried to defend my cub, you know, and, you know, and then we just have to watch how we do things and how we say things. Cause people also look at us like they know we're Christian and they're, we don't want other people to think, oh, that's what Christians are doing either. You know, if you're proclaiming to be a Christian, you don't want them to think that either, if you want them to become a Christian too. So and then I liked how it said, love your neighbor as yourself, you know, in here, because you got to treat them the same way, you know, as you would want to be treated.
Yep.
I like the parable, I like the parable that Jesus used with the, the lawyer. When he was trying to justify his actions. And how, how Jesus used that when he had the with, with the with the, the priest and they walked on the other side and the Samaritan, the good Samaritan came over and he took care of the, the man that was beaten. But the other two didn't take the time to find out why he was beaten, why he was naked, why he was torn down. And I, I, I liked how he just flat out asked him, so which one do you think was the neighbor? So you know, you know, and you, we keep hearing that, especially today, you don't know what someone's going through. If you haven't walked in their shoes, don't judge them. You know, everybody, everybody has a story to tell.
Love that. Well, since we're on the topic of the questions, well, let's just jump into the questions. So the question, the first question on the study is what other scriptures, stories or passages can you find that deal with favoritism, genuine faith in the power of tongue? Did anything jump out to you guys?
While you guys think about it, what I love about cross references is a few different things. Like I think a lot of times we can lean on our own like ways of getting information through podcasts or anything like that too, where we're looking at a scripture through someone else's filter. But when you're able to start learning to use the Bible to interpret the Bible, that's where like a lot of the stuff starts bridging gaps between different books. And then you're able to see major themes throughout scripture. And Tamara actually had a, she was shared, kind of a struggle by trying to find those throughout the study. And I think that, like she said, everybody's got to start somewhere. That's absolutely true. And so I think it's studies like this where we can see what other people got out of stuff, especially when it comes to cross references, where we're thinking about what other places in the Bible or in scripture, do we see the same things taught or illustrated in different ways? And it's so cool because you'll see a whole bunch of different, different stories kind of come up throughout that. So yeah, what'd you guys think about cross references in here? Just other examples in scripture of the three kind of teachings we're talking about tonight?
Yeah.
Well, you can find, you know, I found cross, cross references in Luke and Leviticus and Deuteronomy.
Shell said Joseph and the brothers. Which one, for which, which teaching shell? I suppose you probably could do multiple of the teachings with Joseph's story. It's so long. We got favoritism probably in Joseph's story.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
We got you.
Yeah, I tried speaking last week and I was like, I didn't know how to use it. So I'm kind of getting used to.
Well, you're here, you're in.
Yep, welcome to Zoom.
This is probably like the second time I use the Zoom order. But, but are we on week two, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they're talking about the power of the tongue. So it's, I like that scripture where it says, Jesus telling, I think he's disciples about, you know, it doesn't matter what a person eats. It's what comes out of the prison. So that defines us who we are and everything. So that's why we got to be real careful about the things that we tell people and how we, things that we say that it shows pretty much whatever we talk, that's the way I see it, what we have in our hearts, what we have in our soul. So that's when we got to be real careful about about anything we tell anybody because we can, you know, actually hurt them. Some people, you know how that saying that goes sticks and stones want to hurt your bones? Or how does it go?
Yeah, I actually, I wrote that, I wrote that down. The childhood saying, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. And that's not true. Words will hurt you and they can scar you.
Yeah, that's true. So yeah, we, I always think we got to be real careful what we say to other people or we never know what they're going through or, you know, anything. So that's why Jesus always warns us about, you know, how, what we talk to others, how we speak to others and all that. So we, it matters a lot.
Yep.
True.
There, you know, or that, don't, don't judge a book by its cover.
Yeah, that one too.
I have a sign to myself on my monitor at work that is simple. It just says, assume positive intent. Because sometimes you can have people coming into your office and they just, you know, rather than researching what, and finding the answer out themselves, it's just easier to come in and ask. But I have to assume positive intent on their part. And that helps me be more kind with, with an answer.
I think that goes right along with, you know, what the Bible says about think on these things, you know, and thinking good thoughts and lovely thoughts and being good to one another and thinking good to one another. So that little saying you have, to me, goes right along with that. It just, it fits right into the Bible.
To me, the part about our faith without works is dead. And that reminded me of the faith, he rose in Hebrews 11, I believe it is. And just like Abraham could have told God that he would take Isaac up, but had he not done the action with it? You know, what would have happened? There's a whole list of heroes of faith in that chapter and it ties in because we can believe something. And I think it was in this chapter, yeah, in verse 19, you believe that there's one God, good, even the demons believe that and shudder. And so believing, it's got to be more than just a belief. It has to, it has to have meet with it. It has to be action. And that may, you know, look different from person to person, but how can you profess and then just sit there? I remember growing up and people would call it fire insurance because you just wanted to say, I believe in God and hope that got you into heaven. They called it fire insurance. I'm not sure. But just the faith part and those people that were counted as heroes of faith, they all took steps to see, to see it through.
That's one of my favorites and something that I thought about too, is Abraham and Isaac. Just a great illustration of genuine faith and, and putting action towards it.
Yep.
I was listening to a podcast this morning of Tony Evans, and he was actually talking about a scenario where somebody comes to you and they, they say they need something, they're cold, they're hungry. And we pull out a Bible and we tell them to be well fed and, and send them on their way without really meeting their need. Then that is, that's the works part. We shared the Bible with them, yes, but did we really help them? I don't know. So we, we have to be, what's the saying? We have to be Jesus with skin on it or something like that. That's not exactly right. But otherwise we're useless for really, pretty much. We have to meet people's needs.
That's good. Something that I wrote down was Acts 1034, when Cornelius calls for Peter and he was a Gentile and Peter was a Jew and had a vision and they ended up meeting each other. I'm sure a lot of you guys are familiar with that story, but if not, those two weren't like Gentiles and Jews were not supposed to be near each other. Well, they were, and they came to understand that God does not show favoritism in a scenario like that. I thought that that was good too. Question number two was, can you think of any parables that Jesus shared about favoritism? I will wait a minute to see if anybody has anything to share.
Well, you guys, what you guys are thinking about that. Cindy, I love that story with Peter and Cornelius, because I think it illustrates almost all three of our teachings. Like there's not favoritism, there's no favorites in the kingdom. There's, there's genuine faith in Cornelius to like, get a visitation from an angel and be like, oh, okay, I'll do what he says. He actually does it. There's action there and there's action on Peter's part to like, follow. And then like Peter speaking blessings in their house, like in his house, and sharing the good news, the gospel of like the power of the tongue in that way. And so I was like, man, that one hits all three. And I feel like these teachings go along together pretty well because like you, I mean, this is for sure genuine faith and power of the tongue. Cause generally like, there's going to be some type of things you're saying, or if you think about power of the tongue, there's so much power in holding your tongue too. And so, yeah, I love that story. That's a good, that's a really good, good one.
Kind of sums it all up really.
So back to your question.
Somebody did ask where they could find the questions, Mary. So if you click that link, should bring you up to the resources tabs, a resource tab on the church center app. So you could go to church center app, the homepage, hit the group button and then tap on the Bible study and it should be already there. Or you could replay the last Bible study that Will did. And he actually showed it. So there's that. Moving on, question number three, how are good deeds and faith connected? Anybody got anything for that? I wrote down Ephesians 28 through 10. It's by grace that we've been saved through faith. I'm sure y'all have heard that one multiple times, but if not, yeah.
I believe they're both connected because like the Bible says, you know, you can't have good, like if someone is in need and you tell them, you know, I can pray for you when you can help them right there. You know, that's your good deed with your faith. So if you have faith, if you, if you just tell someone on the street, like, you know, I'll pray for you, but you don't help them, even if you can't, then you know, that's not really helper for that person. So that's how I believe they're both connected. Cause if, once you do a good deed and then you can help them, you know, that, that would help the person a lot. So I believe if we can do both, if we have the power to help someone, not just pray for them, then you know, that's, that's when we should do that.
Yeah, that's good. It reminds me of, I don't remember the scripture really, you might know it, but it's like, ask Jesus to bless you so you can bless others. Yeah, he blesses you so we can be a blessing. And I think that, that's awesome. And it's so true. True faith deeds follows what shell says. Yep. So it kind of goes along with everything that we've been talking about, kind of like Abraham and Isaac. You got to have both. And question number four, what are some of the descriptions that James uses for the tongue? And so he, let's see if I can.
One of them is restless evil, full of deadly poison.
Yep.
Where did you see that?
This is where our different translations like, great. I love it. Yeah. What'd you, what jumped out to you guys?
Well, what jumped out to me was like fresh in saltwater, grapevines can't bear figs. And I'm not sure if that's where that was going or not, type thing. And praising cursing, you can't do both. I mean, shouldn't do both. It's like contradictory.
Yeah.
What'd you, what'd you say?
It's like the rudder of a ship.
Yes. You can, you can visit the captain, you have the rudder. It, it can steer the ship anyway. So it depends on how you use the rudder. I liked that one too.
Also the one about the horse bit in a horse's mouth, you can make it move any direction you want to go just by pulling on one side or the other, the same as the ship.
This is like when I was saying in the beginning, it's a beautifully crafted punch in the gut. Like if your tongue is equal to a rudder for a ship, a bit for a horse, or a tiny spark that lights a forest fire. That's something we should probably consider. Gosh.
And one of my favorite illustrations for like power of the tongue. And I mean, I did like eight years on the youth team. So like, we're trying to make everything visual as much as possible. But, and I'm just like, I happen to be in my room next to my bathroom. And so I grabbed a tube of toothpaste. And so you know how easy it is to squeeze toothpaste? I won't, because my wife will get mad at me, but it's actually hers. But how easy it is to squeeze toothpaste out? But it's like impossible to put it back in, right? And how easy is it for words to come out? But it's, it's impossible to put them back in. So like, you know, what we're saying, if it, if it comes out of our mouth, there's no taking it back. It's almost like, like, so if I were to like, you know, think of, okay, for me, what has the most teeth? If I'm going to like, just like James did, describe it as something, he describes it, the rudder is a bit. And I'm like, what, like goes out and you can't take it back? And for me, I'm like, that's probably a bullet at some level. And a bullet can like provide for your family with, you know, through hunting or something like that, but also can destroy so much too. And so it's just an interesting, for me, I'm like, okay, that's what in my heart, my mind, if I'm, if I think that, I'm like, okay, my words have, they like that teaching just has a little bit more teeth to it. And so hopefully you can find what jumps out to you as well.
Had the intention behind it. That's good. My husband's grandma, after church on Sunday, if you guys watched Jill's sermon, it was about anger. And so my husband's grandma was talking about how she saw a story on Facebook and it was this little boy. And every time he got angry at something, it was uncontrollable. And so his dad would give him a hammer and a bucket of nails and send him to the backyard to the fence. And he would say to just hammer the nails into the fence until you cool down and then you can come back. So time and time again, it started lessening and he felt like he could control his anger. So he stopped doing it. And then he said, okay, so now I want you to go out there and pull all of the nails out and put them back in the bucket. And so he did that. And then he looked at the fence. I mean, I'm sure you guys could see where this is going, but the fence is just ruined and has all these holes in it. And he said, like, you can't take that back. You can take it out. And, and someone can forgive you, but they'll never forget how it made you feel. And so I thought that it's also a good analogy for the power of the tongue, because like Will said, the toothpaste can't go back in the tube.
That's a good, that's a good illustration.
It's super powerful.
I like how he used fire.
So it's like, yep.
I like how James used a forest fire. Once it starts, it's hard to control. It's kind of like your tongue, once you start. It's a, you, you can, you can actually set the tone or the temperature of a room just by how you walk in and what you say. Walk into a room angry. It's these frenzy, it's like a frenzy, you know, you, you go to this person, you go to that person and you go to that person and you go to that, that person. And pretty soon there's this fire, right? Where, you know, it's almost, you're mad at one person. So you're trying to get this other person to agree with you. So you're just going and and then you do it to the next person until you, pretty soon you have this whole group of people and they're going after this one person. And they don't know the whole story. They only know your story.
So sad, really, when you think of it like that. But this also was reminding me that our tongues So sad really, when you think of it like that, but this also was reminding me that our tongues can also do the opposite. So there's scripture um, on how our words can be healing like honey. I think that's in Psalms. Um, but there's scripture all over the Bible that's talking about the power of our tongue. And so um. It's cool when like what was saying, the cross, cross references or the little footnotes in your Bible. Um, they kind of lead you all over and it will fill in the gaps, you know? So just something to practice. It's just when you're reading your Bible and yeah. So we will move on to the discussion questions, cause it's seven oh four.
Let's go.
What's up? Okay, um, the first question is why is faith in Christ and favoritism incompatible? So in other words, it would be like, why is faith in Christ in um favoring somebody over somebody else? Why, why does that not work?
I wrote a few things down. I wrote like, there's a vacuum mercy to the less fortunate. It insults people made in God's image. It's inconsistent with Christ teachings, things like that.
Good, thank you.
It's incompatible because we all have worth and we know that Jesus died for all of us. He didn't just die for the famous or the rich or the beautiful. He died for every one of us. And in him, we are all special and he loves each one of us the same.
Truth.
Did they hear me?
Amen. Yes, I think my screen is frozen, but I heard the audio. Did everybody get it, get that? Okay, awesome. So yeah, it's definitely a favoritism naturally seems unfair, but um, it runs much deeper according to James in the Bible that when we judge each um, genuine faith enables us to see Jesus and others properly, the way that he sees all of us. So question number two. How does God's mercy for us in Christ change the way we treat those who are poor in the eyes of the world? And it's kind of um, similar to the last question, but if you were able to read um, in Matthew five through seven, there's a lot that stands out that goes with this. Did anything jump out to you? How does God's mercy for us in Christ change the way that we treat those who are poor in the eyes of the world?
You're kind of cutting out and I can't hear some of the words in this question you're asking.
That's okay. Sorry, my Zoom, I don't have very good internet connection. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
I'll uh, I can ask the question to you if it's a little bit easier. How does God's mercy for us in Christ change the way we treat those who are poor in the eyes of the world? And you could probably even rephrase that to like, how does like God's mercy for us change the way we treat anybody? Um, because I think the eyes of the world can have different eyes for man, whether you're rich, poor, famous, not like whatever it is. What do you guys think?
Well, God's mercy for me personally is uh, I'd be nowhere without his mercy. And so when I look at, at others, you know, the, especially this time of year, the Christmas season is also the giving season for a lot of people. And so you're getting lots of mail for, for these, these poor kids that have cancer and destinate, you know, and the wounded warriors and those people to me are poor in spirit and, and because they've lost so much. Or they're going through and they're suffering so much. And so the mercy that God shows, has shown me. It really helps me to have mercy for those folks and even more than I would normally, um, because God's done so much for me. I want to give it back out. And that's every season, but especially at Christmas time.
I think if God's given us mercy, it's kind of like, I want to say our duty, but that's not really the right word to give it to others. Um, because we're supposed to be trying to imitate Christ, you know, and do as he did. And when I think of all the times, if I didn't have God's mercy, oh my gosh, you know, in my life, um. And I just think it's something that we need to do, you know, and it's hard sometimes, man. I have a really good friend about 12 years ago betray me something fierce. Um, and it hurt to the core. And I didn't, you know, that's when your mouth can, you know, that's when the tongue can really, really get at you when you're hurt, when you're angry. Uh, those types of things. And so I just purposed it in my heart that I was just going to say, whenever I thought about her. I was just gonna say, God, give her mercy. No, I just, I just prayed mercy on her. Um, and by the time you finish doing that, you start sort of softening down towards that person. Cause we're not wrestling against flesh and blood, you know, but against the evil powers. So making that person feel horrible isn't going to do anything. Um, and I just think that that's just like God has set a great example by showing all of us mercy and his mercy and grace um, towards us. It's just really important, uh, even though it, you know, you can read that over and over again. Um, and it can kind of become mundane because you read it so many times, but it is a very, very important piece.
Yes. Anything jump out to anybody else?
I think one of the, I just call them sticky statements. Like a statement that really sticks with me. There's a book I read years ago and, and it said, um, if you are like living as Paul talks about it in Galatians, in step with the spirit. Then you start to treat people according to their destiny and not their history. And like, that's such a, like for me, that really stuck with me. Cause I'm like, like Donna, like you said, like even though some like people, their history could be full of betrayal or hurt or heartache or whatever it is. And though forgiveness doesn't equal trust, like obviously you're still going to like put up some boundaries, but like Jesus still like treated people according to their destiny and cause he could really see it. And that's something else that um, last year I really took a lot, a lot of time to study the gospels. I guess it was all of this year. It's almost next year already. We're almost to December. But like most of this year, I've been reading the gospels in a way where I'm just trying to study how Jesus lived his life. Like that was the whole goal. And we did that in the Luke study earlier in the year. I'm just trying to kind of fill in the blanks on just how did he live his life? And so looking in the, in between the verses too, kind of, and that's one of the things that I was highlighted to me of Jesus always treated somebody according to their destiny. Just think of like Peter denied him three times, you know, but he still chose to use Peter in such a cool way. Um, and, and redeemed him in such a cool way. The end of John. So that's just one of the things that really stuck out to me of like treating people according to their destiny. And whether that's someone you know, someone close to you, or someone who walks the door with tattered clothes. Um, or jumps out of a BMW, like it doesn't matter. Treat people according to their destiny. That's something that stuck out to me for sure.
That's good. Awesome. Okay. Question, let's see, number three. In what ways are we tempted to seek favor in the eyes of the world? What would happen if we were fully satisfied in our Lord Jesus Christ? Um, I said, keeping up with the Joneses and content, no matter the circumstances. I feel like um, I feel like in America specifically, everybody's just always trying to like get the next best thing or do the next best thing, you know? Like our Apple iPhones or Apple products, there's a new one and we gotta have it. Um, I feel like that's how we kind of seek favor in the eyes of the world. But if we were just satisfied in who Jesus is and know that he's enough for us, that the stuff doesn't go with us. You know, when we die, so why shouldn't it matter? Um.
Shell said what we wear or the title at work.
Ooh, that's good. Yeah.
I think about, oh, go ahead.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay. Can you see me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think about Peter, um. You know, when he denied Jesus, he was sort of seeking favor from the world, saying, no, I don't know him, you know, he was, he was just trying to distance himself. And then when he denied him that third time in the cock crowed. Think about how he must have felt and us as well. If I do something where I know it's wrong, it's not what Jesus would want. Then all of a sudden, just like Peter realizes, look what I've done, you know? I think that to myself, look what I've done. And just the hurt I feel of how Jesus feels toward me, you know, I know he would, he still loves me, but um, just feeling how I hurt him by not doing what I should, you know, and so um, I think his God's mercy for me in Christ changes that way so that we could treat others in the way Jesus would, so that we would see through his eyes and have that same feeling that he has for other people.
That's good.
Here's a question. Do you feel like seeking favor in general is like part of the kingdom of God at all?
No.
Why?
Because I think it's very self and you're trying to elevate yourself in like a not godly way. Now God elevates us. Um, and that's, that's just how I feel about it.
I think it depends on your motive. If you, if, if you're praying for favor over your family member, because you want to see God's blessing on that person. It, it's not necessarily something selfish. Um, like we want a title or we want something for ourselves, but praying for God's favor in order for them to move into what he has for that them, or even for myself. I don't think that's, that's a bad thing. Cause I want God's favor, his will and his way.
So you kind of, we talked about two things like God's favor and then people. People in the world or just, or just others. Like, so maybe it's like the world as a whole, I think is like more of an illustration of maybe even evil or like the fallen like type of mindset. But what you're, you're talking about Perry is like much more of like a godly sort of thing, but it's still favorite people. So my question would be something like this, like, do you feel like is one of those favors earned and one of them given? And if so, which one?
I think the worldly one is earned. And the godly one is given.
Mm hmm. I agree.
Thank you.
And so if you put yourself in both of those scenarios, you know, I guess Don didn't offer an exact scenario, but like what, what you would see in the world. Um, if like favors given by God already, then we simply, instead of having to do, we just have to be. But then James says we also have to do. Anyway.
How you do it though? I mean, if you're doing it out of love, there's a difference. If you're doing it because it's something that's God calling you to do. That's different than doing something just to put a feather in your cap to say, look what I did. I did this for them. Because I, God, God's word says that, yeah, we're to do good things, but we're not to be boastful about it. So you know, if you see, if you see a, a mother that's struggling and, and you decide you're gonna go and buy them Christmas, you know, you're gonna give them money, this blank check and you're gonna say, go get them Chris, Christmas or go, go get, go get you food for you, the holidays. And you do it because that's what God's called you to do and you feel good about it. But do you now turn around and go, oh, look what I did? There was, there were, I went to the store and there was this mom who was struggling. And so I gave them a blank check. There's a fine line there. Are you, are you doing it? Are you telling other people that you did that to make yourself look good? Or are you telling people? God called me to do this and I followed. I followed his will. I followed his heart. I followed that inkling that he gave me, that urge, that, that heaviness he put on me to say, help this person. You have to be very, very careful. My grandmother used to tell me that all the time. Be careful on how how you, what you ask for. And how you ask for it. If you ask for it in the wrong way, it's not going to be answered.
Like the Bible says, you ask wrong, you ask amiss, you know, is, is um, and a lot of our problems come from that. We're self-seeking and um, it doesn't always end up good, or it could end up good for a very short time. And then you can come tumbling down.
Yes, we're running short on time, so we'll move to the next question. Those are really good answers. Um, question number four is first Samuel says that God looks into the heart, which I've been finding a lot more. Um, a lot more scriptures on that same exact thing. Um, but it is important to have the proper motivation and understanding the value of our deeds. What are we being asked to do and why? So I think like the spirit just kind of already guided us into that question. Um, as we were all talking about um, good deeds and why are we doing it? Um, that was already answered. So question number five, how does what we say reveal what is in our hearts? Uh, we kind of touched on that earlier. Um. So let's see. Yeah. I think, does anybody have any new insights to share on those two questions?
I could share what I wrote for five and I'm, I'm gonna kind of hope it goes along with it, but I.
I'd love to hear.
You guys are a little over my head sometimes, but I'm trying.
Feel that way. Feel that way.
Well, I'm certainly learning a lot. That's for sure. And then, and that's why I'm doing this side. I'm not going to give up, trust me. But I, but I wrote down um, for number five, when the um, Holy Spirit purifies a heart. He gives us self-control so the person will speak words that please God. It was one of the thoughts I had when I read it.
That's very good.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions thus far?
You know, I was just gonna, an observation that I made like with the taming of the tongue and so on and so forth, when you're going in there. It seems like sometimes when I think about things and I like, oh, let's work on this, you know, or whatever. I seem to fail more as I'm working on it than when I'm not working on it. And it gets frustrating. So it's like, well, what is Satan coming against me? Because now I'm trying to do something because now I'm failing and it's frustrating when I'm trying to better, do better at something.
I think we can all relate to that. I think anytime God gives us something to do and we're, we're going after it. And, and I mean, is very aware of that. Um, we are, we are called to put on our armor and take one step forward and trust that the Lord's got it. So you're not alone in that.
Right. You know, the Bible says, when you've done all you can to stand, stand. You know, so just keep on going and keep standing and um, you'll, you'll break through and you will have successfully.
Yeah.
Remember too, when we're just coasting along, we're not much of a threat to the enemy. But when we're, we're trying to learn and we're trying to spread the good news and everything else, we become much more of a threat. You know, he can get by with letting one person off. But now if you're talking, you know, you're learning more and you're spreading that to multiple people. Now you're much more of a threat. I've noticed that in my life all the time. The more, the, the more I get in the word, the more stuff I do, the more, the more under attack I am. I've noticed that in my life all the time, the more, the, the more I get in the word, the more stuff I do, the more st- the more under attack I am. But I also know that I have that armor to fend off those attacks.
My grandmother used to always tell me when, when you're feeling the most per- persecuted, that's when you know that you're doing exactly what God wants you to do.
Funny, I agree with that a- absolutely. Um wait, let me look at your name. Blood at? It's like so tiny out of my glasses on right now, um that I agree with you a hundred percent. Sometimes some people are like totally out of will, what, you know, with what they're doing and they're, they're having an issue because they're not doing what's right.
Right.
If that makes sense, I totally agree with you. I'm, I'm just mentioning that because I've had people come to me before and say, well, I was doing this and that, and you know, and I'm thinking, well, that's why it didn't happen, you know, because you're going against God's word in, in what you're doing. So yeah, we just kind of all measure everything up again, you know, to his word, but yes.
Um I heard something not that long ago, again by Priscilla Shire, but she was saying how and when we take on, put on our armor, that the enemy has fiery arrows that are coming at every direction. And they're not actually meant, well, I mean, sometimes he tries to actually, you know, kill steel and destroy, but he wants to distract us, so he's gonna catch everything on fire around us.
Yep.
Um without actually you, just so that we can't stand firm, that got exactly what James is talking about. Um stand firm and, and have good community and read your Bibles. But does anybody have any questions about um moving forward and um just reading their Bibles in general? Do you have any questions on that? I think we're good. And it's seven twenty-six, so um I think I'm gonna go ahead and close in prayer if you guys don't have any questions or anything.
I got one. I'm just curious, like, so we just read about how like God wants to you know, have us actually go not just be listeners but doers, right? We have like these three things, some solid teachings that like we kind of see throughout different scriptures and stuff. Um of like this power of the tongue, uh the favoritism and genuine faith. And so my question to you guys, like in the spirit of like, we want to be doers, not just hearers. Like, I would love to hear you guys, um your thoughts on like, how is your week gonna be different this week, given what you studied? And so like, is there a certain thing that God's highlighting between those three? Or maybe it's something, you know, separate. Um but like, would you be, i- if you'd be bold enough to just share? Because I think it's encouraging to hear that like, I'm not the only one messed up and I do have things to work on. Other people are like, are, are getting something that they want to um make themselves you know, better, they want to better themselves in a way where like Donna said, like imitate Christ, we want to look more like him, we want to do the things he did. We want to like spend more time with him. And so when we do those things, um we're actually like showing that faith. Um and, and wearing it outwardly with the motive of just, man, I want to do this to get closer to Jesus. He's, he's calling me into this place, beckoning me toward um something that's gonna make, refine me and make me the best version of myself. And so wh- what are those things in, in your lives as you're, as you're reading this? Um wh- how's your week gonna be different because of what we're studying in, in scripture? Wha- what do you guys think?
Mine's gonna be power of the tongue. I've been working on that a little bit because it, it really, really never really thought about it that hard, but it affected me when it said, how can you praise and curse out of the same mouth? And that has really been on the top of my mind, so I've been working on that.
Cool.
An important one.
Um it's hard. It, it, it is the, it is hard. It comes out of unconsciousness sometimes when you're doing it and I've been catching myself and it's, it's been a little frustrating, but um I'm gonna keep working on it.
Well, this week for us is, and for probably a lot of you, it's gonna be families getting together. Um I really, really enjoyed Thanksgiving when my mom did all the cooking. My mom is passed on. And so um there was a time when I'm like, Larry, I'm feeling like I don't like Thanksgiving, you know, because it's so busy, but just to be thankful. And speak that with my mouth, speak praises and thankfulness. Um and then to my family when they come over to do everything I can to lift them up and encourage them. Um find their good points and, and talk on that. I, I listen to people carefully. Um I ask a lot of questions. And body language I watch and I can just tell, you know, somebody comes in the room and they're all like this and big frown, Walter frown, you know, it's like, okay, something's going on. Um need a minister to that person and lift them up. So if you have a chance being around people, sometimes family's the hardest, you know, it's the hardest to to minister to or talk to, but to, for me, I'm um just gonna purpose to make sure that I use my tongue to encourage um and lift people up and praise God. So.
Yeah, what Will said, I was thinking that exact thing at the time was about Thanksgiving and people's destiny, not their history. And when it's family, um there's history. So I, that was great advice and, and we can use our, our tongue for good and encouragement, just like you're saying. I absolutely agree.
Yep, I think this week I'm gonna um be more intentional with my words, like you guys were saying. Uh um I think Debbie just said what I was gonna say.
I think this week where the office that I work in out here, especially in New Hampshire, um heroin is big, so we have embedded in our, our um office, what they call the MAT program. It's medically assisted treatment. And a lot of these patients that come in, they're patients that have just gotten out of jail. Or they're in the program so that they don't go into jail. And sometimes I tend to be a little judgmental with them when they come in. And like Pastor Will says, I'm judging them on their history and not on who they're trying to be. So I wanna, tomorrow I have a big MAT panel coming in with my provider, so I want, I'm gonna try to look beyond the history and look at where they're trying. The reason why they're in that program is because they want to better themselves. And not be so judgmental.
That's good. Like that. Uh Dean says he's serving at the homeless shelter on Thursday. That's awesome. Love it. Shell says no more gossip. She's gonna cut that out. That's, that's good stuff. I love it. Cool, share, share on the, on the link to or on the, the groups tab for the app. We kind of have like a little ongoing discussion and everything like that throughout the weeks. And so if there's something you want to share on there or uh even if it's a struggle. You know, for me, I was actually talking with uh Pastor Sean about it, so power of the tongue stuff, I feel like I've got a pretty good lid on it, but if I stub my toe, what comes out of my mouth? I'm like, and it's just subconscious. It's like all like, I'm just like, where did that come from? Like, how long has I been stagnant in my like flesh that? You know, like and stuff. And so I'm like, that's, that, I was sharing it with him. I was like, that's been the hardest thing to kick. Is like, I, I can't just say like gumdrop or something like that, or you know? Or like, you know, some of those old orbit like gum commercial like insults, you know? And, and stuff. And that's just one of those things that's like, it's, it's frustrating and I obviously gotta give myself grace because it's just reactionary and I'm not actually responding. I'm reacting. Um but that was something I'm like, I'm gonna really try and take a big, deep breath. Uh when even something as silly as that, where I smash my finger or whatever it is. Um because every time I've been seriously injured, I don't have that response. It's always like the silly little things. Oh, and so that was something for me um that jumped out, but um Clad, I really like, I really like that. Um you're just like, there's definitely some people that have come in that you know, I'd want to show, you know, less favoritism to or um you know, whatever that looks like. I think that around the holiday seasons for sure. You know, at least at the church people, there's a lot more people coming in um asking for different things and, and all that too. And I think that we can get caught up in that as well. And so um something I'm gonna be on the lookout for. Too. Thank you guys for sharing um for real. So we'll uh respect the time, we'll let um Cindy, I'll get you to pray uh at the end and then um if anybody wants to hang out uh and ask another question or um I, I'm gonna try and have something special for anybody who hangs out after. I got one thing tonight um for a, a, a little nugget. And so this one is not a serious one, so don't get your hopes up, but either way, I'll give it over to, to Cindy to, to pray and close us out.
Uh next week we are reading James three thirteen through eighteen and James four one through ten. Um I think that's on the study guide and is Jason up next, Will? I think.
Nate.
I think it's Nate, yeah.
Nate.
So Nate will be leading next week and if you want to read extra proverb one through three. So I'm excited to dig into that, but let's close in prayer. Uh dear heavenly father, thank you for joining us as we gather to get to know you deeper. Thank you for your joy, your love and your peace. Lord, we ask that you show us that you're with us throughout this week of Thanksgiving and that we can feel you near. I pray for opportunities to arise this week for each of us to show the love of Christ in our communities. And we love you. We thank you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.